Okay, I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, November 1st, 2021. To order, roll call, please.
Mayor Gravino?
Here.
Trustee Carroll?
Here.
Trustee Gateley?
Here.
Trustee Lowery?
Here.
Trustee Nedvich?
Here.
Trustee Salazar?
Here.
All right, thank you. Audience comments? Trustee comments? Item one, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is mobile food vendor code updates. As the board may recall, we discussed mobile food vendor ordinance at the last meeting, and there was some direction to come back and put some stipulations on where a food truck can go if it's used in a, as part of a restaurant. Mike is going to give us a presentation, but I did want to point out, we broke this apart separately because we had the conversation about video gaming updates and mobile food updates, and they are two separate issues. So, we're actually still working on the video code updates to bring back to. We assume it's going to be at the next committee of the whole meeting. Tonight, we're focusing just on the mobile food side.
Yeah, I won't be actually doing a formal presentation, but more or less just kind of picking up where we left off. I wasn't here on the 18th, so I did watch the video and just got kind of caught up on the conversation regarding mobile food vendors. This obviously started when we took a look at a business on Route 31 and the ability to use a food truck as a means of preparing food. And then the, what we had discussed at that time with that operator was serving the food inside the building. You know, from my perspective, as of zoning interpretation, it was a restaurant. We ran with that in hopes that one day it would kind of foster itself into taking over as a restaurant, maybe one day facilitating and operating fully inside the building. So, and having these discussions, whether it be with the village board, with the business operator, and internally, you know, one of the things we're looking at is, is taking opportunity to maybe spur or promote restaurant development on Route 31. You know, we don't have a lot of it at this point in time. We do have quite a bit of commercial activity and some more national brands south of 88, but north of 88, you know, we haven't had any restaurant, I think might have been Bruno's, if I'm not mistaken. So, what we're looking to do is just kind of take this opportunity to open up the mobile food vendor provisions. Now, again, it's not in the zoning ordinance, it's a separate standalone provision that stands, I think it's under business regulation, so it would not be a zoning change per se. And hearing some of the concerns of the board at the last meeting, they discussed things like, you know, unfairness to brick and mortar businesses, which was kind of a common theme when we originally started the mobile food vendors back in like 2016, which we again amended last year due to some issues that were happening on the west side of town off of Tanner Road there. But we were opening it again now, and to sort of take this opportunity to define an area of town, which in this case is Route 31. I use the geographical area that is used for the Route 31 special sign district is where that came from. I think it was mentioned at the last meeting. But what we did was create some further amendments and provisions that were not discussed last week, but sort of derived from that conversation. Now, one of them being that the, this one was discussed, it provides exemption to the mobile food vendor. So, there are the provisions that exist. They talk about you can only be in one property for two hours a week. You can't have more than one food truck, you know, serving on a property unless it's done as part of a a village event or something like that. This will provide a further exemption on top of what we have for catering events. You know, we did talk about in 2020, I believe it was, last year, that mobile food vendors could be a part of an event as long as they were catering and not charging the guests. So, that way, if someone's having a private graduation party, that could be done as part of that event without, you know, having any restrictions through the mobile food veteran provisions. So, another exemption would be the ability to use the truck to prepare food along Route 31 in a property that is either owned or leased, a designated property that is an applicable zoning district. That area makes up several different zoning districts, whether it be B2 or B3. You also might have some residential or OR properties sprinkled in there as well. So, the point being is that it has to be in a property that allows restaurants as a permitted use. And that is the first provision that I have here shown on the staff report. The second one being that the food shall be served inside the building or tenant space. This was, you know, obviously, the notion being that the food can be prepared outside in the truck, but also too, the fact that in order to operate as a restaurant, we want to promote people being inside, want people to take advantage of that space so they could eventually grow into that space, would be to only serve the food inside. The third item, third bullet point, would be that the, and I'll just read it verbatim, "Mobile food vendor vehicle shall be parked in a location contiguous to the building and not interfere with customer parking or vehicular or pedestrian traffic." Now, what that doesn't say is that you cannot use a parking space. What, the idea behind that was so that you weren't interfering with your own customer parking. You don't pull a food truck in the middle of your parking space and then potentially have people lining up, asking questions if they can get food from this truck or not, more or less to keep it off to the side where customers can come to the building and the property and actually park in front of the physical tenant space or the actual building. And then in a situation too, for pedestrian vehicle traffic, that it wasn't impeding on any private walkways or any drive aisles within the parking lot. That was the idea behind that. The last one being the mobile food, mobile food vendor vehicle should not be located on any portion of a public road, public sidewalk, or path, or similar to a public way. Obviously, we just want the food truck and all the operations associated with that away from public space, away from the public property. Those two provisions actually came from the outdoor dining provisions. So, we're just taking code that we already have in the books. That is a similar nature, and then applying it here with the food vendors. So, you know, with that, I just kind of want to open up the discussion on this. The draft ordinance that's included in here is very rough. I just wanted to include all of the provisions, so that way the board had ability to look at one document, see what all the provisions are from mobile food vendors, and then how the actual amendments might look. And I just did some general just reformatting of it and included those provisions I just spoke about as an exemption as part of the Route 31 corridor.
Well, I'll be honest, Mike, I have a problem with, I don't have, I would love to see this restaurant thrive and alive. If we could somehow have some fair and just way of allowing them to operate their business using the trailer. But in terms of the whole Route 31, I have a problem with that, to be honest with you. In other words, allowing trucks all along, you know, food trucks all along 31, I don't like the idea. I think it might bode well or poorly for the future. In this instance, that said, I'd still like to see this restaurant thrive and stay alive. Is there some way we could make a law or maybe give them a variance on the ordinance or something that could allow them to operate? Incidentally, there, I went by there today, and their truck and trailer were parked right in front of the building. So, I don't know if they're not in business yet or what, but it was around noon time. Are they open for business?
So, aside from the first aspect of the ordinance where it limits it to only properties that are already where restaurants are permitted to be, I mean, that in itself limits it to only certain properties?
How many is that?
Well, it could be, it could be, the way it's defined here is it could be any, basically any property. In our case, we're referring to restaurants being permitted using the B2 and B3. So, it's going to consist of most of the properties located right off of Route 31, north and south from Sullivan Road up to Oak Street.
The second thing that you can do is you can limit it, very similar to how you did with marijuana dispensaries. If you wanted to test this out, I mean, I don't, Mike and I don't see a run of food trucks calling us and asking to start locating, you know, north or on Route 31. We haven't, this is the first time we've had the question, doesn't mean we won't get it again soon. But you can definitely limit it, and if it actually becomes a thing where all of a sudden we limit it to, let's say, two or three, and we get two or three, we can always revisit it. But that would be one way to prevent it from expanding.
I'd be open to two or three, I mean, if we could limit it. I had that same thought in fact, that maybe we could somehow work it where there would be a limit to how many would be in that corridor. See, the whole idea of me running were two things, was one, friend house somehow try to mitigate increase, constant increases in taxes for the constituents, and to beautify Route 31. And for me, a food truck isn't a beautiful thing. It's a practical thing, and in certain situations, very useful thing. But I don't think a permanent food truck or a series of restaurants that have trucks behind them going up 31 is, would help beautify 31, the corridor. That's my position, that's my whole, I wish we could do something about this, to allow these people to operate their business successfully with the intention of eventually moving inside, the rest of the kitchen inside. But yet not make it pass an ordinance that allows this, the whole corridor to be possibly, not the whole thing, I'm exaggerating, I guess, but the point is, the future comes, and we can't really predict in terms of long-term future. We don't want to settle ourselves with some restrictions or some limitations to what we want to do in terms of other goals, that is beautifying the corridor. So, that's kind of where I stand on this.
I'd be in favor of kind of limit the areas myself. I don't want to see food trucks up and down Route 31. I kind of like what you said, Steve, I think that's probably a, you know, reasonable way to go about it. That's where I'm at, and I agree with you, Mike, so.
I had a couple other limitations that I would, if we're going to create an ordinance around or regulate, I would like to further restrict the premises, that it's a leased premises that doesn't otherwise have an existing kitchen. Because I don't think we want someone like Bruno's that has a kitchen parking a food truck on their property and serving out of the food truck. So, that would be one limitation. The other is, I think the food truck needs to be parked in an area where it's the least visible from Route 31. You can't, it can't be parked in the front yard where it is right now, or the front parking lot. It's got to be in the back where people can't see it. That's my opinion, and then the, the only thing, your second point, you said food shall only be served inside the building or tenant space. I would say unless they're otherwise approved with, under our outside dining provision, like if they come in and build and enclose outside dining, like Oak Street or one of the other restaurants have done, I don't have a problem if they're serving food outside there, but the walk-up food, I think, should be restricted. They shouldn't be able to go straight up to the truck and buy a taco or.
So, essentially, you're still using the food truck to cook, you're serving inside, but if you want to have an outdoor dining area with an actual patio, people could still go inside, get their food, and then bring it out.
Right, and you would have to come in and get whatever we require for outdoor dining for other brick and mortar restaurants. And then my last question is, does this restaurant that's existing now fit into this new draft ordinance right now?
Yeah, this is very, this is very unique. In the nine years that I've been here, this is the first time this has actually come up. You know, the property that we're referring to, actually at one point in time, was a restaurant. You know, a lot of what makes up Route 31, we do have some old restaurant spaces, but predominantly it is a lot of office space, former retail space. So, it might not be something that is conducive for an actual restaurant. So, they are sort of limited, not by just zoning, but also with regards to the building stock that we do have already on Route 31.
I'm not, I kind of agree with, I don't want to see a flood of food trucks along Route 31, but I think if we are going to draft, it needs to be as restrictive as possible.
I would be in favor of what's been voiced so far. I think you do want to create an opportunity for someone who has a truck, and then they have to have a lease space to go along with it and give them the opportunity to build that into a bigger and better restaurant. But again, putting some restrictions, maybe there's a, maybe it's three, or maybe it's five, or however that could be accomplished, I think it would, I would be in favor of, maybe that would attract some more businesses to the corridor. And again, I agree with Mark, it can't be, cannot be parked in front, like Mike mentioned, that it's parked in front of the building. I think that's definitely a no. It has to be in the most obscured space from the street. But I, I mean, I would agree with it, go forward with some restrictions as well.
Trustee Carroll, can you go back? You made a comment about having it at a place that has a kitchen. So, I want to clarify, so the current spot has a kitchen, it just doesn't have all the operating functions that they're looking for. So, in the case, let's say you brought up Bruno's. And I'm just asking, because I know surrounding communities, there are places that have actual restaurants and have food trucks affiliated with that restaurant where they park in the parking lot because it's their business, so they actually do park their truck there regularly. They don't cook out of it, but it is in their parking lot. So, if an existing business has a food truck on a side, they're not cooking out of it. I mean, are we still allowing them to park in their own parking lot? Because I mean, I want to make sure that they're still allowed to use their own parking lot.
I think that's a different scenario.
Okay.
As they're not operating a food, as a food.
As long as they're not cooking and serving out of it to the public in the parking lot.
But I would still say that that should be parked in the least visible spot in their parking.
That's possible, you know, we don't expect people to, you know, it's, in this particular case, I see in the back, there isn't any area to put the trailer in the back, is there? They can do it maybe adjacent or to the side.
Yeah, that may become the run of the issue too, that some of these properties are adjacent to residential properties as well. So, that's something we have to juggle and take a look at. We can identify those properties, you know, want to maybe put them.
I'd like to see what's reasonable that we can do to make sure they're not just right off Route 31.
So, the reason that this particular business that's there now is not using the kitchen is that there's more capital that has to be put into it to make it a functioning kitchen, or just your choice?
I've not been in the building, but I believe, so before, it was a restaurant at one point, and then it went to a office, like a title loan type scenario, and I believe some of the equipment wasn't ruined at that time.
Yeah, so, the idea of this is to attract some businesses in and eventually turn them into a full, have a full kitchen? Is that the general kind of thought you might have, is that the future thought?
Yeah, you know, because there could be further conversations about assisting business with kitchen equipment eventually, maybe with through TIF funds, that is an idea that's been kicked around a little bit. So, that would be, it's sort of a pilot program to sort of spark something.
So, that being the case, do we want to maybe put a limit on the amount of years that you can have a food truck out there? Or do we just let it go permanent? You know, say this mama does this, and they're doing well, they just, we're just going to let them have a food truck forever? Or do we want to put a limit on it upfront, a couple of years, three years, five years, whatever? Or is that something we can add down the road if we wanted to? Just curious, I mean, if, I don't anticipate this becoming a huge boom, but if it, if it did, you know, maybe we limit it and say, hey, you can do this for your first two years or four years or something, but then at some point, if you're doing well for a few years, you got to put a kitchen in there. I don't know, maybe that's one way to.
I agree, we should try to get it right at the outset, instead of trying to backtrack and fix the mistakes afterwards.
We could always remove it down the line.
Try to think a little bit, you know, ahead of time of what issues may come up, such as that, and maybe it is where you don't want a food truck there for five years. And if we change the ordinance, then what do you do if the person has the existing lease? Then we can't make them move out, so it's just something to consider.
Yeah.
And then maybe you could add to the TIF ordinance that coinciding that if you're an existing business that's been in business with a food truck for two years, you could qualify for help with kitchen equipment. Is that what you were kind of throwing around?
I like that idea.
It's more or less, it was just more or less a general, I was looking at that as an option of using TIF funds for other locations I've worked at, we've done that.
Can we limit this just by case by case basis, you know, like, or like a special use or something? Because I agree with everybody here, but you don't think about the one thing, and then all of a sudden, oh, there's a loophole, and we're like, oh, why you think of that? And, you know, there's a lot of different scenarios, you can't park behind, you can't park on the side, what if it's, you know, who knows? I mean, it's just case by case, and say, you know what, this case works, it's a blighted building. I mean, the place is not the most attractive place, it's kind of shoehorned in the corner, you know, just, it's kind of, so maybe this would allow the landlord to put the new parking lot in or go through TIF, get a parking lot, at least it's not red and yellow anymore, so I mean, maybe just, but like, trustee Nedvich says, you know, if the goal for them, then we'd be like, we're all thinking, oh, we're the business, and this will be great. But to them, they might be like, this works for us, we'll have an old van sitting on the side, and we'll cook hot dogs out of it. So, it's like, we have different ideas of, I had different ideas when they said they're going to fry out of it. When we approved this a year ago, I'm thinking, oh, they're going to put behind the building, they just run out there and use a deep fryer, then all of a sudden, they're actually doing it all in there, and doing it in front, and it's all different. Our vision, as we sit here and our experiences, we think something totally different, so.
So, you stole the words right out of my mouth. What I was thinking we could do is, by limiting, because it's not in the zoning code, it wouldn't be a special use per se. But what it would be is if we put something in the ordinance that said that we only issue these permits upon application to the village board, I envision that to be like our special event license, where it has to get board approval each and every case that qualifies for it. So, in this case, you can literally limit it to this first one, and just say, in this ordinance, from everyone after that, they have to get individual approval for the permit if they're going to operate in this manner. Now, all the other food truck provisions would still go throughout the community, they can still follow the ordinance and, you know, go to events and stuff. We're talking about just when it pertains to the 31 district about opening up a restaurant.
This is a one-year renewal, so like after one year, we're not, they're not following what protocol we all envisioned. We don't renew it, is that how it's kind of laid out there?
That certainly could be the case, and I actually would prefer that, just because it eliminates any subjectivity. I'd rather you guys be making those decisions and have that in front of you, so that way it doesn't become an issue later on. So, it's something we can definitely take a look, take a look at.
I do, I do like that this business is at the very far, far end to try this out on. I mean, that's, that's nice.
And it's vital of, right in the middle of everything, right there, right? Yeah.
I'm in favor of doing it that way.
Right now anyhow.
Any other questions, Mike, or?
No, these are all great suggestions. I mean, I'm hearing that some of these might balance each other out with the number of years that it would be applicable versus the number of actual food trucks we allow. So, these are all, this is all good information, and we'll go back and see what we come up with.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, item two, ARPA funding.
Steve? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill is going to give us a presentation, and I'm sure the board, you've read my report, you've heard it all over the news, but the American Rescue Plan Act is funding that was made available for COVID relief, and, excuse me, not COVID relief, infrastructure projects and whatnot. And one of the things they're trying to do to stimulate the economy is give money back to the local governments to implement programs. And so, one of the things that we're going to do is, we have an obligation at one point to dictate how we're going to use the money, and Bill's going to go through all that, and we have an idea for the way that staff might use it with board approval, obviously, so we're going to go through that as well.
Okay, thank you. So, ARPA, one of the many things it did was provided 350 billion to state and local governments, of which Illinois received about 13 billion, and five and a half billion was allocated to local governments. We are a local government under 50,000 populations, so we are considered a non-entitlement unit or an NEU, and we receive our funding directly from the state instead of directly from the US Treasury. As the board is aware, our allocation was 2.4 million. We are receiving that in two annual installments. We submitted our application for the funds back in August 2021 and executed all the appropriate agreements and acknowledgement about the requirements with the funding. We received our first payment on September 1st, 2021. And as far as the timeline for these funds, we have to obligate them by December 31st, 2024. And we have to incur expenses related to the plans for the funds by 12/31/2026. So, that's the current outline of the ARPA funds. There's already discussions about treasury rule changes, there could be changes made in how the funds can be used going forward, so it's really a kind of a moving target a little bit in terms of how this is going to play out over the next several years. There's already been a change in the first reporting deadline. We were originally scheduled to have to report to the Treasury October 31st or 29th, I believe, and they pushed that back to April. So, you're already starting to see some changes, and I expect we'll see more changes, you know, as time goes on. The stated purposes with, for the ARPA funding were to essentially support response efforts related to the pandemic, replace lost public sector revenue to strengthen support for public services, support economic stabilization for households and businesses, and address systematic public health and economic challenges due to the pandemic. So, those are the sort of broad stated goals that were issued regarding the ARPA funds. So, there's essentially four broad categories of eligible uses for the ARPA funds. One is to respond to the public health emergency and its negative economic impacts, assisting households, small businesses, nonprofits, or assisting impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality, providing premium pay to public health workers working as a result of pandemic. And this third one is a little bit complicated, for the provision of government services to the extent that we realized a reduction in anticipated revenue due to COVID-19. So, essentially, they are giving you broader latitude to use the funds for more general public services, and the criteria essentially is if you experienced less than 4.1% revenue growth off of your base year of 2019, and/or if that number was less than your counterfactual revenue growth in the three prior years. So, that means your average revenue growth over those three prior years, if that's a number greater than 4.1, then that's the number that you use to determine that analysis. So, essentially, it looks like, when we've done the analysis, we had revenue growth, as we've discussed several times, greater than 4.1% over the last year, and it has to be an analysis based on the end of the calendar year as well, which makes it a little bit complicated. So, but this is, this is an analysis that needs to be done annually. It could change, but as of right now, it doesn't look like we are eligible to meet that assumption. And so, that kind of restricts what we can use. We hear about a lot of communities using funds for road maintenance, repairs, and different things like that, but that's only to the extent that you had revenue, a reduction, anticipated revenues less than that specific number. So, if you had revenue loss of $200,000, you'd be able to use $200,000 in a little bit more broadly purposes. The final category is, what Steve alluded to, was to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And that's the one we're going to talk a little bit more about on the next slide. As Steve said, our initial kind of determination, as we're walking through this process, was that, you know, because of the restrictions on the funds and the multitude of other programs that have been done by the state level and the county level to help different groups of industries, businesses, and people, focusing on one of the eligible things related to lead line, lead service line replacements might be a good possibility. And essentially, we can use the funds for any program that is also a drinking water, state revolving fund eligibility, or a clean water state revolving fund eligibility. And so, I listed the various categories under both of those programs, and obviously highlighted the topic of lead service line replacement as something that might be an appropriate application of the funds to consider, given the environment of those restrictions. So, I guess, I'll move it to the next slide, and John's going to take it over from here, but there's been a lot of work, as Steve has mentioned, you know, going over what the potential scope of our lead service line replacement program might look like. The cost is not insignificant, and it's not something that we could fund easily right now, given our current resources in our water fund and other planned water projects that we have. So, it is something that would be based on the ultimate cost. Use of the funding in this manner would help us achieve that goal. I'm just going to go, kick it over to John now.
I'm on. EPA is linked lead and drinking water to negative health effects in children, pregnant women, and adults. These negative effects incur in children, it's, they're linked to slow growth, hearing problems, and anemia. In pregnant women, they say that there's reduced growth of the fetus and premature birth. And adults, there's cardiovascular effects, including blood pressure, incidence of hypertension, and kidney, kidney, reduced kidney function. So, as a result of these, in response to these health concerns, the EPA has introduced a rule called the Lead and Copper Rule. The Illinois State Legislature reviewed that Lead and Copper Rule and introduced House Bill 3739. The Illinois State Legislature reviewed that Lead and Copper Rule and introduced House Bill 3739 in the interest of public safety. And that House Bill is the Lead Service Line Replacement Notification Act. And that was just signed into law on August 27th, um, 2021 and it becomes effective in January. The act itself has two primary components that we should be concerned with now. And those are that we need to develop a lead service line material inventory. So we're going to have to go out and figure out what every lead service line is for all our houses, all our residents, all, all the businesses and determine if those are lead, copper, galvanized pipe or PVC. And then based on that inventory, the, the next component is that we have to develop a lead service line replacement plan. So on the next slide, we'll kind of explain and where, where the schedule of activity, the schedule of these activities, these two activities and the progress that we have made as a village so far. So that inventory that I had spoken of, um, the village currently has developed a preliminary, uh, inventory. The completed inventory is going to be due on April 15th, 2022. That inventory doesn't necessarily have to be submitted at that time. It'll be another year before it has to be submitted to I E P A, but it does have to be completed and submitted to I E P A by April 15th, 2024. So the way the village has been going about, um, assembling this inventory is based on kind of past plans. We knew that a certain date and time lead was outlawed as a lead service, as a water service construction material. So if we knew a house was built after that time, we could eliminate it from the inventory as being at risk of lead. Uh, we've also had, um, our historical experiences with construction and our water superintendent, and he's able to tell us which water main was replaced. And at that time, we have documentation of certain lines, whether they're lead, copper or what they might be. So our inventory right now is based on that information. And based on that information, we're estimating that we have between 300 and 800 lead service lines i- in the village right now. Um, to, to refine that inventory further, what we're going to need to do is, um, basically knock on doors. So in those areas, those neighborhoods where we know that there's those 300 to 800 lead services, we're going to start by sending letters and notifications out, we're going to make some, maybe make some social media announcements and let everybody know that we're going to have to get this information from you, um, in order to complete that inventory. Once we have that inventory, we're then going to be required to develop a plan on how we're going to replace all those lead services that we've just identified. So there is a timeline on that as well. Once we have that plan in place, they give us till April 15th, 2027. And based on the number of lead service lines we identify, and ours is going to fall into the category of less than 1,200, they're telling us that we have to have 7% of the, of the services we've identified replaced on an annual basis. So, um, essentially, and they put a hard cap on that of 15 years for us. So each year from 2027 through the next 15 years, we're going to have to take 7% of those total and get them completed each year. Um, that doesn't mean we can't do it fast, we, we can always go ahead and replace more if it becomes a priority or the board chooses to. I think, uh, on the next slide, um, we kind of put some cost estimates together based on our past experience with, um, the Maple and Elm replacement program that we conducted last year and we replaced some water services there. Um, prices came in at about $8,000. Now, we've recently identified a few more and have been able to replace them at a cost of $4,000 each. So we gave a conservative range of maybe $4,000 to $8,000 per service in, in replacement. Overall, multiplying that by our 300 to 800 lead service lines means we're looking at expenditure between 1.2 and 6.4 million dollars. So in consideration of the, the funding that may be coming available through this act, this is just one consideration, um, to, to make as a use for that funding.
And I have a question, so 300 to 800, that's a big area.
That's correct.
So, uh, lead, I'm going to say lead pipes, what, 1950, somewhere, somewhere there? And then prior to that, that's what, what we're looking at? And so you'll eliminate the homes that were built after the lead pipes when that, that law passed. But, um, where would that be exactly? Is that like right around the river?
It's kind of, yeah, it's more of the State Street neighborhood and over by, um, where the backyard water mains are, kind of Cherrywood area and, uh, I think Farview over in that area on the west side of town. And then on the east side of town, we're looking at, um, Locust Chestnut and Spruce area, uh, Long Avenue D, Sharon, um, those neighborhoods there.
So about 1,500 square foot homes?
That sounds about right, yeah. And, and part of the issue is we, we had replaced a, a fraction of the water service in cer- certain instances. So if we were in a neighborhood and redid the water main, at the time, we were replacing the lead water service from the main to the B box, because that was be the village's responsibility. We didn't go beyond that at that point, so those are going to have to be revisited as well.
So I think the most important thing, and Bill, thank you for rescuing me. So this started off as, as COVID relief and then it, it expanded to also infrastructure projects. What we're getting out of it is that there are multiple uses for this. We've kind of honed in on this because this is something that, I mean, the staff has been monitoring the lead service line law for a while. We knew it was coming down, which is why if, if the board remembers on Maple and Elm, we did kind of a case study to see what it would take to actually replace lead service lines. Uh, you may have seen in an email I sent to the board that I also authorized us to go back this week and actually replace a couple galvanized steel lines, which, because galvanized steel contains lead in it, that's also apparently included in the upcoming law. So we felt since we had just done that neighborhood, that we wanted to make sure that we honored that same neighborhood and fixed the three that were galvanized steel. Um, based on that, what we're looking to get from the board right now is if you feel this is a, the right direction to look in for the possibility of using this funds. And as John alluded to, um, yes, there is a requirement to do so many. The most important things is to get that inventory locked down, notice the town and let them know that, hey, we have an inventory, we really want your help to get it really good. But the biggest thing that we need to do is figure out a program going forward. And why that's important is the law requires you to replace a lead service line when you, when you find it, okay? So there's two ways to do that, could be an emergency repair, it could be a planned, uh, program from the village. The village right now has had a longstanding history of every time we do a water main program, when we notice uh, lead service lines on our system and that it's not our water main, those are the service lines from the water main to the B box and then the lines from the B box to the home. On our side, when we find lead, we replace it at the time of the water main change out. What we're saying now is every time we see a homeowner who has lead on the other side, on the private side, aside from notification, there also has to be a plan in place to replace those. And the way we understand the law in its infancy now is that you can put the onus on the resident to replace it or they could sign a waiver and say, we don't want to replace it and we acknowledge that the village told us about this and so on and so on. What we're looking to do is get more aggressive and say, you have lead, we know you have lead. The village may have funding to offer you partial or full payment to replace the private lead line at the time we see it, so that it's gone forever and, and off the books. And then we get rid of all the lead all at once, little by little. That's kind of where we're going with this and we have to bring that program back to the board. So we wanted to see how you felt about it in general, if this is a good use of the, uh, COVID relief funds through ARPA.
I think it's an excellent use of the funds, uh, from what I can remember, uh, the, the total of 2.4 million or something like that, that's almost half the total cost that even at the 6.4 million dollar estimate. So I think it's a great use, it'll keep us, our budget kind of operating on a nice even keel. And then we still have 15 years after 27 to come up with the rest of it, so, uh, I think it's a great idea.
And so, and I will point out too, some of the neighborhoods that we suspect may have lead lines are also some of the neighborhoods who are due for water main replacement programs. So there are actually a couple that, because they're older neighborhoods, you know, water main lasts anywhere from 50 to 80 years. And in that range, not to give a wide range, so somewhere in there, we typically replace them. Some of those neighborhoods are in that range. So what's nice about that is when you replace, you're not just going and, and replacing four or five, you could go in and wipe out 150 at a time depending on where you're at.
So.
An excellent use of funds, that's all, so I think you're on the right track.
Theoretically, a homeowner could waive having their private lines replaced.
So right now, that's still up for discussion kind of with the Illinois Department of Public Health. So the way I understand it is if a homeowner were to waive the replacement of the line, we would have to document that and send that to the Illinois Department of Public Health. They'd retain a record of it, at some point it's going to be at a public location and known to the public either on a map with us or with the Illinois Department of Public Health. And it's my, my suspicion that it, it's not going to be something that goes away. The Department of Public Health will keep pers- knocking on our door saying, hey, did you look at this line yet? Are they going to replace it, what's the status? So I think it's one of those things, until it's replaced, somebody's going to be asking questions.
Well, could the homeowner could sell the property and then the, that new owner come back at the village and say, I want it now, five years from now.
That, that could be the case.
There were, there were a lot of dates just thrown out. Did, did the one say we had to spend that ARPA money by the end of 24?
2026.
We have to.
Obligate it by the end of 24.
Okay.
So does reserving that for this project qualify as spending it?
Yeah, yeah, we would obligate the funds and then go about working the plan and then, um, need to stay to incur expenses by 2026.
I think it's a good use of the funds, I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, I was hoping for something a little bit more exciting for the village than the replacement of lead pipes, but, uh, uh, or a little bolder along 31. But, uh, I think that this being a public safety, uh, infrastructure thing is probably the smarter thing to do, but, uh, I don't know, if, if we get more, uh, or qualify, I would like to see some full plan for Route 31.
When the staff was talking about this, we did talk about the fact that there may be, the board may have seen some other uses potential other than just, uh, infrastructure projects. So the way I look at that is that the village is in good financial position. If the board would like to discuss those types of things, of course we can, whether it's a strategic planning or, or in the future, we can talk about a program. We got a TIF district that just started, so we have the ability to create some new programs for Route 31, if you would like to look at that in the future as well.
I think the health of residents are, is a number one priority, so I mean, it's a pretty simple decision, I think. And if we can do more than 7%, I'd be in favor of that, I mean, maybe not go, you know, but.
Should have clarified that, I was getting at that 31 has its own funding source potentially through the.
Yeah, I know what you mean, something different, right, I'm, right. So, so we're all in favor, right?
Yes, yes, everyone's in favor.
All right, very good. Anything else, board and anybody?
I have nothing.
Motion two, oh, no exact session, correct, and motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Don't favor, say hi.
Hi.
Close the same sign, have a good night.